We'd like to welcome you to another edition of Grok Talk. Brought to you by New Hampshire's leading conservative blog site, GraniteGrok.com. We are your feared extremist, right-wing, hard-charging, gun-toting, opinionated, outspoken, rabble-rousing, letter-writing, radio-microphone-stomping conservatives and rational libertarians. So get ready for more news and opinion you could only get from GraniteGrok.com.
Welcome back to Bonus Grok Talk on November November. Where did that come from? January 17th. November. It's November. It's cold. Now, welcome back to Grok Talk. January 17th. We're happy to be here and we have a great topic and some great guests and we're going to keep going because this is an important subject. So I'm not going to waste a lot of time chattering endlessly about where you can hear us and so on and so forth. We're just going to talk about Wyndham. And right before we went to the break, I interrupted you and you were going to make a great point. I want you to continue, please.
Yeah, I think I was talking about the Inspector General's report in Massachusetts. Yeah. So, you know, since we've got some time, what I'd like to do is maybe just read a couple of the quotes from that report because I think that they're very telling. And before I get into that, Synergistic changed their name from Energy Education, Inc. in 2012. So it's a company that's been around for about 28 years. The first 26 is Energy Education, Inc. And this Inspector General's report actually references them by name. It says, and it includes several quotes which I'll read to you now. "Before paying a vendor hundreds of thousands of dollars, this office strongly recommends that school districts determine if some energy savings can be achieved through other forms of education or energy conservation measures. Although EEI claims that its program is unique, energy conservation and management service options exist in abundance." Okay, so let me just divert for a second. Our administration proposed that we enter into this agreement for $577,000 over five years without any bids, without any kind of competitive bid process, in violation of our purchasing policy, which claims, which states that any purchase $5,000 or over must go out to bid when feasible. Now, this is a whole different branch that maybe if we have time, I'll talk about. But the term "when feasible," as defined by our administration, is, means, maybe when it's convenient, not when it's possible. And so, a vast amount of our purchases never get approved by the school board that should. But anyway, let me get back to this advisory.
So, Ken, it sounds like Massachusetts had studied this company carefully and had basically said, "It's an expensive scam." They didn't use that word exactly, but they're basically saying, "You're paying a high price for a dressed-up version of something you could get practically for free off the shelf." And they advised all Massachusetts school districts not to take this option. And so, in the presence of this publicly available information, your school board is saying, "We'll go ahead and spend the money anywhere and take the kickbacks." Over to you.
Well, this advisory, I didn't find until Wednesday morning. So I didn't have this on Tuesday night, but like I said, I was so troubled, I was so troubled by the process that, you know, I wanted to look into this further. And to get, to touch upon what you're saying, Mike, is, as in this advisory, they had a statement that said, "This office recommends that awarding authorities not execute contracts until they fully understand the basis of the service fee being charged and should be able to tie the fee to a measurable product deliverable." It goes on to say that awarding authorities should be very clear on the following points. "The 10-year projection used to market and sell the program is not guaranteed, and the district is contractually obligated to pay EEI's fees regardless of whether the district ever achieves the projected savings." It also says that they guarantee only that the savings will exceed, will not exceed, it guarantees only that savings will exceed costs, not that the savings will equal EEI's projected savings. So in essence, if we save $577,000, EEI gets all of it, or Synergistics gets all of it.
Question. Did anybody on the school boards bring up the notion that, gosh, guys, PSNH will probably do this for free?
I did.
Ken did.
Absolutely. I was confident.
And what was the result?
I was confident that, you know, I brought quite a bit of concerns. I spent with Mr. Murray. I reached out to Mr. Murray because it's been my philosophy since being on the school board that we have an awful lot of expertise in our town. We've got engineers, we've got contractors, we've got people who are CEOs of companies. And I believe it's important that everyone who has a vested interest be involved to whatever level they feel comfortable with the management of our local government. So in this case, I wanted to reach out to PSNH. I knew they had these programs that, they provided free services for energy audits. They also provide rebate programs. And I learned of this through Mr. Murray. So I reached out to him. I asked if he would be on a phone call with me if we could find a contact at PSNH and then just explore and see what kind of programs they could offer and suggest. Between Monday and Tuesday, we spent about 90 minutes talking to them. And I was armed with this information thinking, hmm, we have an alternative. See, although our administration didn't go out and get competitive bids, I believe that we should have competitive options to consider before spending taxpayer dollars that, in my opinion, are well and far beyond the value that we were going to get in return. So between the two of us, we spoke with PSNH and I felt comfortable. I also was concerned about the fact that we weren't taking any time to vet them out. And I mentioned that this agreement is in conjunction with the Salem School District, that if one of those districts didn't agree to the contract, that we wouldn't move forward. Back in September, Salem was going to do this with Derry, the Derry School District, and they refused. So I brought that up. I thought that that's a red flag. It's at least something that needs to be investigated, understood. What was it that Derry knew that we didn't know? What was it that they were either uncomfortable about or didn't make it right for them? Now, I brought this up in the meeting and the Synergistics representative gave me an answer, but I believe in due diligence and I believe that there's always more than one side to the story. And I wanted to have time to go ahead and talk to Derry about this and to get their feedback, but to no avail. The following day, doing a lot of research, it wasn't just the investor, the IG in Massachusetts report that raised my concerns. There were also other concerns and you can read about them on the Grok. They actually covered this story. They did a wonderful job. They took my letter to the editor, which lists the concerns of the investigator general as well as a couple of stories by Kimberly Moran. And you guys might have written some other stuff as well. I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to do that, to shine the light on this story. People need to be aware of what's going on in their school districts.
Yeah, and I'll be putting up the video clip. It was nice of you to send me the DVD. I'm going to try to process that this weekend. You know, that long school board, but it's the very end stuff that we need to get. So I'm going to try to clip that out so that people can see exactly what happened when recess police, recess police. I mean, this is craziness. And it goes back to the Guilford situation of somebody from the, you know, a resident wants to go, "Wait a minute, you're doing this wrong and the police are going to be called?" This is way beyond just punishment of dissent. This is intimidation.
It is intimidation.
It's bullying.
It is. Thank you. I was about to say that. Here's all this time and bucks that are being spent by schools all over the nation and here's the leadership doing exactly what they say they're trying to prevent the kids from doing it, but oh my, we get to do it to our residents, the voters who put us in the office. We can bully them. Isn't this just ducky?
And that's exactly what the chairman did. He bullied me. And I happened to be sitting right next to a reporter, by the way, when this happened. And I'm not going to tell you that I didn't raise my voice. Of course I did. When I saw what they were doing and the mistake that they were about to make in the motion, but to call the police and to actually have two uniformed officers come down there, it was uncalled for. I even had the reporter, Barbara O'Brien, sit next to me and ask like the question, shaking her head, "Why did they, why did they call the police?"
You can go online to the Aryan News Group dot com. She wrote a very good article in this week's paper and it explains the situation, I think, very well.
Now, has anyone gotten any kind of feedback from the chair or whoever called the police to get their reaction? Why did you, why did they do this? Or are they just doing CYA-type stuff?
I would say the latter of the two. I haven't heard, I haven't heard a credible reason for why he would do that. To be honest with you, I mean, I would have expected an apology or some sort of, you know, I made a mistake, I should be hearing from the public.
You guys, at the next meeting, you guys have got to set up a camera looking at them and then zero in on him, watch the person, if it's not you, somebody else, and go, "What were you thinking?" And right, you know, if they've got a public input session at the very top, take control of that meeting and ask, "Why did you do this? What thoughts going through your head said that you've got the Stalinist," and I'm going to use that word specifically, "the Stalinist tendency to basically run somebody out of the room for simply voicing a disagreement."
It's not only that.
And then promised them, "We're going to put this video up and you've got to keep the..." The one mistake you guys had is that they had the ability to turn off the camera. You guys have got to be able to say, "I've got my own set of cameras."
Well, that's true, but you know what? This isn't something that was planned. This isn't something that we were trying to...
But it's an object lesson.
You know, it is an object lesson, you know? The thing that I find disappointing is that in the article that I referenced in the Pelham Wyndham News is that the chairman was asked about the policy, his policy. I want to be clear about that because when I was on the Rich Gerard Show, Gerard at Large a couple of days ago, he kind of phrased the question, said, "I chided the chairman." I didn't chide the chairman, you know? After the decision was, when we were bringing it up for a vote, I took a couple of minutes and I explained that we were doing a disservice to our town, to our voters and taxpayers and parents. And I brought up the fact that this was, that I would like to hear from the public, that I would like to hear from the residents, our experts, as well as people on the Citizens' Facilities Committee, and that it wasn't my decision, you know, that the chairman put this unilateral policy into place. And I wasn't chiding him. I want people to know that I am not a part of this decision and that it's limiting my ability to serve in the role the way that I would like to do that. So, you know, I just wanted to make that clear.
I wanted to bring something up too. When the cameras did go off, there was some even more concerning things that happened when I was there. And thankfully, there was a reporter sitting right next to me. There was a comment that was made and you have to keep, let me try to put this into context. At the end of the meetings, a lot of the times, you know, the meetings will finish, we'll go out into the parking lot and further discussions happen.
Yep, all the time.
And...
So we go out. I mean, we literally go outside after the meetings and residents of the town and school board members will stand out there and talk about the meeting. I mean, that's what kind of small town this is. We know each other by first name.
Yeah.
And sometimes I'm there freezing my tushy off, you know? And we get out sometimes at 12, 12:30 at night and we're still there until 1:30 in the morning. And, you know, so that leads to, you know, the fact that, you know, for any of this to happen, to call the police, it's unacceptable. And just to revert back to the policy committee meeting when I was at odds with the chairman, you know, I told him, I said, you know, "This was an embarrassment to our town."
And the policy wasn't followed. And you can clearly see, I came up, I think it was EduCon, when I Googled, there was one company, I mean, in seconds, you can find competitors that do the same. It isn't a unique company from an energy conservation point of view.
Correct.
There's other companies out there and our policy, DJE, clearly states anything over $5,000 of contractual service needs to go out to three bids.
And when Mr. Sineball, he sits on the board with me, he was asked a specific question when he was on Rich Gerard Show yesterday. He said, "Well, the board has the right to override the policy anytime they feel." Well, if that's the case, then why do we have policies?
Yeah. I mean, this is the case where I have been a political blogger now for almost 10 years and have been, you know, an elected official and I see it from both sides. You do want to get stuff done, but it's always the mindset on my part, because of the political blogging, of saying, "I serve the people. I am the public servant." And yes, we do need to listen to people. Now, yes, you do have to manage the meeting so you can get your stuff done. So you have to have the ability to discuss among yourselves what's going on, but then give the public the ability to put their input into it. But what's so hard is, in a case like this, unless you have deep pockets as an individual and bring a suit against these folks, they stonewall you. And let's face it, that is the operative word for what we're seeing with these school boards. They're stonewalling everybody.
And that's exactly...
And they're steamrolling people, bullying people to get what they want.
Is there a, I mean, if it's a policy of the board to be able to ignore its own policy, is that written down anywhere? I mean...
There is a, there is a policy that says the board by majority vote can overrule any policy. Now, that should be in there. It should. But when the administration ignores the policy, brings a proposal to the board, one company, they didn't do any competitive bid process, there are objections by the public. The fact that the decision was made on the spot and clearly there were red flags, that's my issue.
And the problem is, as a voter, if I lived in Wyndham, there's nothing I could do about this. Open and transparent government, good government, absolutely depends on that open and transparency in its policies, that they are clearly written, they are not shadowy or vague, and that as a voter, you expect your elected and appointed officials to follow them to the rule absolutely so that at any point, a voter can say, "Where's the audit trail?"
Correct.
So how do I know that this has gone on versus, basically, they're ruling by whim, not managing, not being responsible, but ruling. And that's a very harsh term to use, but that in effect is what it sounds to be, that they, we're kings of the world in our domain here in the school district. We're going to do what we want, when we want, and no matter how much it is, and you can't say, "Pupkiss."
As a citizen, it's more, "Sit down, shut up and let me do things."
It's the progressive way.
Somebody needs to sue them.
Well, and that's what I started off with.
It's a manifest injustice is what it is.
Somebody needs to find somebody who is willing to step up and sue them because, I mean, this is $577,000, at least $570,000, which probably doesn't need to get spent, at least.
Now, how much is the legal budget for the school district there, Mr. Ken?
I just looked at that and I think we spent, I think it's $87,000 is what we've spent.
That can be gone in a flash. If somebody were to step up and do this, trust me, I know these kinds of numbers, that can disappear in a heartbeat. But the problem is, how many people outside of the school board are willing to do that? I mean, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, even if you do it pro se, do it yourselves. And certainly, we know people who know how to do that and who could help you out. Jorge Mesa Tahada, Doug Lambert, Tom Tardif, Ed Nail. I mean, there's a bunch of people who do this because it's the right thing to do. Now, if they followed all the procedures, they did multiple bids and all that other stuff, you know, that's one thing. But to do this in what seems to be an arbitrary and capricious manner, yeah, but it's not easy. And that's, I think, one of the problems we see in our government, that it's too hard to roll bad decisions back. The only accountability you have is come election time. Oh, gosh, when are your town elections?
Two months.
There you go. Start now. Get a hold of the voting list and start calling. The problem is, is that the school boards tend to protect the schoolies, as I call them, you know, they're there to protect the government end of the educational industrial complex and as you're seeing now, not so much to protect the voters and the taxpayers. And that's a huge, huge deal and that I blame on the New Hampshire School Board Associations. There is a wall of enmity between the school boards and the voters they're supposed to represent. And trust me, as a budget committee member, I have seen that for years. And the teachers are no better. I mean, the teachers look down their noses at the parents too, and I've got that on video. We've posted it several times where the teachers say, "We know best or what is better for the kids than the parents." And they snare at the parents.
Well, you know, that may be true in some districts and it may be true in ours, but I would have to tell you that for all of the experiences that I have with the teachers in the Wyndham School District, personal experiences with my children going through it and with teachers reaching out to me now, I would have to say that we have great teachers. We really do. The problem is that even our teachers are being restricted in how they can educate in the classrooms. They're being given scripts.
The problem is, Ken, they're being taught that in educational school. I know a young lady trying to get a special ed degree and she just fell over on her chair when the instructor said, "A big part of your role is to monitor the parents." And I went, "What? Monitor the parents?" I mean, as a political blogger, I see this kind of stuff all the time where the teachers know best and they're trying to subvert the parents in their values. You wonder why homeschooling is exploding, why charter schools are preferred? That's part of it. But it's not so much that the teachers just do it anyways, but they're being taught that. You know, the Bill Ayers School of Education.
Yeah. Where are we going from here with this? Obviously, we've come up with a few suggestions, but, you know, your current course of action is to educate the public, to get people aware of the circumstances, the situation involving your conversation with the police and of course, what the board did. And you did say there's an election coming up, which is an important facet of the next couple of weeks worth of conversations. What's the plan? I mean, how do we...
I think, I think the plan is to get the community more involved and just to understand and recognize what's going on.
That's hard.
It is hard. It's difficult.
Well, I think, I think what Tom said, I mean, he's got examples where there's tens and thousands of dollars being thrown out windows, hundreds of thousands of dollars being wasted on the consultant class. And, you know, when people look at their tax bills and then they go, "Oh, well, the school district's just wasting a half a million dollars," it begins to stir up a little interest, even among more casual voters who wouldn't show up at a town election.
Need lots of letters to the editor with specific examples. You start a snowstorm.
Mail, mailers, you know, before the election, you know, there's, maybe somebody needs to start a PAC, you know, register with the Attorney General's Assistant.
SB 128, back again.
And just, you know, I mean, I think it's important, and these are the issues that gal, I mean, when Billy Bear got arrested, it became a national story. I mean, it was national news. We had him on here for 45 minutes talking about what happened to him. It doesn't take a lot to elevate it to that level. Maybe in your situation, you actually get arrested, but we've got those other examples that we've had in the state and we have enough evidence to suggest that school boards are implementing a policy. And we had that discussion with Jorge about how superintendents are getting more aggressive and aggravating and annoying even to school board members. And this culture has developed where they really are elevating themselves above parents, the students, the teachers even, and dictating from on high. And that whole just eliminating public comment thing, I mean, you need to control comment. You can't, you don't want to have nine-hour meetings. You really don't. But, you know, people need an opportunity. They need three minutes. If you, you know, you could train yourself in three minutes, "I have to talk about this subject and get my input," even if it's three.
Yep, I would say, I would say more too.
I mean, if you said, in three minutes, you said, "I've looked at the buildings," or "I've looked at the thing and I've talked to this person or that person and PSNH does this for free and this company will do it for half of that price, I don't say no, I say no right now. Why don't we give it another week? Give it another month." You can say that in three minutes. And if it's on the public record, then you can point at it and bloggers can blog about it and people can pick it up and say, "Well, why did you vote for a $577,000 contract, given all the variables that we've been talking about, that you talked about in the paper?" I mean, that election has to do something. Something has to change. Somebody has to send a message.
If it doesn't change this election, then the Wyndham School District will be business as usual for the next two years.
How many seats are up?
Two seats.
Two seats?
Out of...
Out of five.
Does that make a difference? Is it two seats you might want to flip or is it just...
I would like to leave that up to the voters.
I know.
I believe that we need to educate them as to what's going on.
That's a safe answer.
No, sir. Well, you know what?
That's true.
No, no. I would like to see people who are more aligned with my vision and understanding and philosophy of representing the public. I have no problem saying that.
Start asking.
The two people who sit on the board to my right, the chairman and the person who sits to his right, we, I would say, at ti, in most instances, when it's not a 5-0 vote, because, you know, there are times where we can all agree on certain things, I'm usually in contrast with what their positions are. You know, I believe, you know, we need to have a great education for our kids. We need to put great teachers in the classroom, but we need to do that in a fiscally responsible manner. We have people who built the town of Wyndham. When I moved there 16 years ago, it was a quaint little town that was just so inviting for families and the community. It's wonderful. I've spent time coaching dozens of teams. I've got to know many, many people and their children. It's a great place to live and the people who built this town need to have an opportunity to continue to be able to afford, to live there. We can't price it, price those families out of town. And I want to make sure that we continue this great, personal community where everybody can come together for the right reasons, for the kids, for the teachers, you know, and to get, as you said, Tom, our money needs to make it to the classroom.
Right.
All right. That's a pretty good place to stop because we're at the end of the segment. So, Tom and Ken, thank you so much for coming down here and sharing your story and helping us maybe activate some voters and activate some activists. And you have a taxpayer group in Wyndham?
We do. It's Wyndham Taxpayers Coalition.
Oh, yes, of course you do because Ed's done some previous work with them. Well, we'll talk to Ed and see if we can get him involved in this. Maybe he'd like to take up that banner as well. I'd like to thank everybody who came on the program today. We'll be back next week with more guests, more conversations, more insight, more outrage and more Grok Talk.
When asked whether she still supports Obamacare, Senator Jean Shaheen said, "Yes, I do continue to support the law. We're beginning to see some positive results." How can Senator Shaheen say we're seeing positive results when 22,000 of our neighbors have already lost their health insurance? What's worse, the Boston Globe reports the state's only health insurance provider radically reduced the number of hospitals in their network, forcing some people to drive over an hour for lab work, even when there's a hospital within a few miles of their home. When pressed about lack of access, Shaheen said, "There are some hospitals that are not covered, unfortunately, and I certainly hope that's going to change." Jean Shaheen promised us we could keep our doctors and our healthcare coverage. Now she hopes we can get to a local hospital? Call Senator Shaheen at 603-647-7500. Tell her we need more than hope. We need leadership. Paid for by Citizens for a Strong New Hampshire.
Senator Jean Shaheen said, "If you like your current health plan, you can keep it." That's not true, Senator. 22,000 New Hampshire citizens have been kicked off their insurance plans. Hospitals in Rochester, Concord and Portsmouth, they aren't allowed to provide care under the exchange. Senator, you were wrong in your comments. You should apologize for your misleading remarks. I'm calling Senator Shaheen at 750-3004 and telling her I want my doctor back. You should too.
Paid for by SaberPac.org. Not authorized by any candidate or candidate committee.
All of the music on this program comes to us through creative commons licensing from Kevin McLeod at Incompetech.com. The opinions expressed on this program are those of the speakers, not necessarily those of CNHT, GraniteGrok.com, or anyone else for that matter.
of CNHT, GraniteGrok.com, or anyone else for that matter.